All right, the time is 4:31. I will call together our City of Minneapolis Planning Commission. Regular meeting, March 9th, on 2020. My name is Sam Rockwell. I serve as President of the Commission. Joined by my fellow Commissioners, who I'll introduce in a minute, but first want to welcome Commissioners Asmiley, Donick, and Marwah, who are all new today. So I'm joined by those three Commissioners, Asmiley, Meyer, Commissioner Suesi, Marwah, Lupkepeer, Schrader, Donick, Olson, and Caprini. Our first order of business today is to approve the actions and minutes of our February 24th, 2020 City Planning Commission meeting. Do I have a motion to approve those minutes? Do I have a second? A motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Our next item on the agenda is to review our consent agenda from the Committee of the Whole. Commissioner Lupkepeer.
Yes, there was an appointment to the zoning board of adjustment, and we recommended that City Council approve the appointment of Joanne Wang to the Board of Adjustment with a term to expire December 31st, 2022.
I'll take that as a motion to approve that consent agenda. Do I have a second? A motion and a second. All in favor say aye. That motion carries. Next up, we will organize the agenda for this Planning Commission meeting. I will walk through the agenda. If anyone in the audience wishes to comment against staff recommendation or to alter staff recommendation on an item, please make your presence known. We'll put that item on our discussion agenda, otherwise we will place items on the consent agenda. Our first item is item number five, Wake Park Elementary School, 1834th Avenue Northeast in Ward 1. Anyone here to speak on Wake Park Elementary School? Seeing none, we'll place item number five on consent. Item number six is 2219 Bryant Avenue South in Ward 10, and we will discuss item number six. Item number seven is 2942 Oakland Avenue in Ward 6. Several applications there, conditional use permit and a variance. Is anyone here to speak on 2942 Oakland Avenue in Ward 6? Seeing no one, we'll place that on consent. Item number eight is 911 Lowry Avenue Northeast in Ward 1, St. Anthony Group. Is anybody here to speak on item number eight? Seeing no one, we'll place item number eight on consent. Item number nine is 2801 Hennepin Avenue East in Ward 1, rezoning, conditional use permit for major automobile repair. Is anyone here to speak on item number nine? Place item number nine on consent. Item number 10 is 616 12th Avenue Southeast in Ward 3, application for an increase in height. Is anyone here to speak on item number 10? Seeing no one, we'll place item number 10 on consent. And item number 11 is 1202 7th Street Southeast, Ward 3. Is anyone here to speak on that item? Place item number 11 on consent. And that concludes our agenda. So Commissioners, our amended agenda is to discuss item number six and place items number five, seven, eight, nine, 10, and 11 on the consent agenda. Could I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended? A motion and a second to approve the agenda as amended. All in favor say aye. That motion carries. Next, I will open the public hearing on the consent agenda. Is anyone here wishing to speak on the consent agenda? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing on the consent agenda. Commissioners, could I have a motion to approve consent agenda with staff recommendations on all items? Have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye. Motion carries. Moving on to our discussion items, discussion item number six, staff, is Shana Sether.
Good afternoon, Planning Commissioners. I'm Shana Sether. I'm the planner assigned to the project. That is number six on today's agenda. The address is 2219 Bryant Avenue South. The existing property is a triplex located at the front of the property. There are no proposed changes to the triplex as part of the requested land use applications today. The applicant has applied for a cluster development in order to allow for a new single-family dwelling to be built at the rear of the lot. This is the existing dwelling. There's an existing detached garage that would be removed. In addition to the garage, the applicant is also planning to close the curb cut and remove the driveway. The picture here at the bottom of your screens is the proposed site plan. The applicant is seeking a conditional use permit to allow for the cluster development. So a cluster development is not permitted as right. It requires a conditional use permit and evaluation of the proposed use. A variance to reduce the minimum lot area requirement, so in order to allow for four units on the site, you would have to meet a minimum of 1,500 square feet of lot area per dwelling, not the dwelling itself, but just a density calculation. The lot is insufficient by 2.3%. Then there are variances on the three setbacks for the proposed structure. So I'm going to just walk through those on the site plan. So the first setback that's requested is the north interior side yard setback. The proposed setback for the structure is five feet, where seven feet is required for a new structure. And the eve also projects too close to the property line. An eve in the front or the corner is allowed to project three feet from the structure, but on the side only two feet. So that eve is also included in setback. Similar condition on the rear yard. It's a seven-foot required yard. The applicant's proposing a little over five feet. The eve is okay on that side. And then on the south interior side yard setback, there are different variances. One is for the eve projection, just as on the north side. The second is to allow for the stoop to exceed 16 square feet, where that is the maximum allowed size in a side yard. And then also, upon evaluation of the application, staff determined that was a principal entrance. Generally speaking, when we look at a new structure or additions to an existing structure, when we're looking at entrances, if you have both a front door and a back door, you can have a side door and not have to comply with that minimum 15-foot side yard setback. But in this case, as we discussed with the applicant today, the principal entrance really is these double doors, and it faces the backyard, what we refer to as the west entrance. And then the south entrance is really ancillary. It opens into a storage area. But because they only have a front and a side, the setback increases for the structure from seven feet to 22 feet, or I'm sorry, 15 feet. So those are the required variances that have been applied for. You'll note, too, that originally, a variance for lot coverage was also identified. The applicant amended plans to comply with that requirement. So that is no longer part of the application and has been withdrawn. Staff is recommending approval of the conditional use permit to allow for the cluster development and the variance to reduce the minimum lot area, with stated conditions on pages eight and nine. So I'm going to just focus on the variances, if that's all right with the Planning Commission. When evaluating a new structure, we really have to determine whether or not there's practical difficulty in complying with the ordinance. That was the difficulty on this particular application. So on the first findings, staff was not able to find anything unique to the parcel that warranted the exception to reduce the setbacks on the north, south, and rear yards. However, staff was able to make findings two and three for those same three setback variances. So that's really kind of the sticking point, I would say, on this particular application. We certainly find that the passive house design is consistent with the spirit and intent of the comprehensive plan for climate change goals, and we feel that the location of the proposed structure will not be injurious to use or enjoyment of other property in the vicinity. It's next to two different detached garages on adjacent properties, and then a surface parking lot to the east for the apartment buildings adjacent to the property. So the only point of contention really is whether or not practical difficulty could be met. So with that, I'd be happy to take any questions. Oh, I'm sorry, one other point. We received a large number of letters of support today. Those were included in your packet. Unfortunately, one came in after I was able to print everything off, so I just wanted to let you know that one more was received in support. So we haven't received any public comments in opposition. Sorry. Now I'll take questions.
Commissioners, are there any questions for staff? Commissioner Olson, and then Commissioner Lupkepeer.
So without the eaves, or if the eaves were two feet on the north and the south side, and without the south entrance, it would still require a variance?
That is correct. So the building is too close on the north, and the building is too close on the rear yard.
Okay.
Shana, so just really quickly, can you touch back on that 16-square-foot stoop situation a little bit? I'm trying to clarify where it is and what the...
Absolutely. I'm just going to zoom in. So the pedestrian path would connect from Bryant Avenue South, as you see, via this pervious paving walkway. And then it lands here at this concrete stoop. And that concrete stoop maximum is 16 square feet, where it's proposed. I believe, I'm wondering if that plan is out of date. Let me take another look back at the staff report. I believe it was 36 square feet in the amended plan, so it's over by 20 square feet. I believe that the applicant can speak to that and whether or not they can modify the size of it to comply. Thanks.
Are there any other questions for staff? Yes.
Hi. I'm just wondering if with the change that you sent to us or gave us with the correction, are any of the recommendations of staff changing at this moment, or are they staying the same?
The applicant amended the size of the concrete stoop, but it still requires a variance. There are no changes to the staff recommendation, just because, again, staff was not able to find anything unique to this property that would warrant an exception to the zoning ordinance. There's nothing related to the topography or access to the property. So when you can't make all three findings, we have to recommend denial. Thank you. Thanks.
Are there any other questions for staff? Seeing none, thank you very much. I will open the public hearing and ask the applicant to come forward, introduce yourself, and add anything further.
Good afternoon. My name's Yannika. I'm with Precipitate Architects and Sustainability Consultants, and proud to be the architects and designers of this project. Really excited to present it in front of you today. Hoping that you'll agree that this is a project that the city could really, is worthwhile, and the city could really benefit from seeing realized. I'm going to speak to the technical and architectural pieces of the project, and then the clients are here, and the owners are really excited as well to share with you some key features and elements of why this project will hopefully be approved. A couple of things about expounding upon what Shana's already mentioned. This is a passive house project, and passive houses, there are five key components that make a building a passive house. Passive houses, if you're not familiar, are energy avoidance strategy. It's a tool that we use as designers when we're trying to do low-carbon, low-energy buildings. And the five components are continuous exterior insulation, airtight construction, thermal bridge-free design, triple-pane windows that are really high-quality, and continuous balanced heat recovery ventilation. This is a project that's, this is a strategy of construction and design that's far outside of and far exceeds kind of what our typical building climate would see. And we are, one of the key features in why I bring all of those points up is that in order for us to achieve a passive house assembly, a wall assembly is much, much thicker than a typical wall. If I were to revise this design and shrink the walls back to what would be approved for code-built construction, we would comply with the setbacks without reducing interior floor area. So keep that in mind. Basically, the net there is that if we're advocating for highly energy-efficient, sustainable buildings, the walls are going to get thicker, which reduces our livable square footage interior. So that's kind of the first piece that I wanted to mention. Another element is that the, excuse me, the home is cited, and the real reason for the setback variances with this particular project is the home is cited for optimal solar exposure and solar gain. This is hopefully going to have the largest residential solar array of any project in the city, as far as we can tell. And the roof design, the eve design, and where the home sits on the lot are all taking that into consideration. And so we thought very carefully about how we could best achieve those high benchmarks for sustainability goals and still be as, you know, comply with as much of the ordinance as existing as possible without being unreasonable and asking for too much. So we hope you'll find that this project, given the merits that it has, the thicker walls that are needed for highly efficient, sustainable construction, and the optimized roof design and location on the lot for solar exposure and solar gain, will be worth approving against the staff recommended denial for the variances from the setbacks. I can also speak to any other questions that you have architecturally or technically, but I didn't want to, you know, go too far in depth without getting into the weeds. So, any questions for me?
Commissioners, are there questions? Commissioner Lupkepeer.
Yeah, hi. So I just wanted to touch back on a couple of the points you raised. I think they're interesting. So in terms of the achieving added sustainability with this building due to wall thickness, I think, I know I've encountered this in practice. So my question, though, is have you mentioned that had you done a typical, you know, wall construction that we would see, you know, done anywhere in the city? Do you have the distance between, like, I know you said it would comply, but like, where would it be in terms of like the setback? Where would it be?
Basically, my walls right now are 22 inches thick, which is substantially larger than a typical wall. And so a typical R-21 wall is going to be anywhere between six and nine inches thick. So I can move the house. It would be a combination of designing back to a code-built wall and moving the house just a little bit on the lot in order to comply, but it would be achievable. With the south setback variances, the 15-foot one is a little bit in question. That was actually something that we were surprised by with the staff findings report, but, because originally, we weren't intending to need a variance on that side. That door is actually an auxiliary entrance. It's not a primary entrance, so that's sort of a surprise. But we, so that makes it difficult for any project, any way I design it to fit on this lot, which is another reason why that recommendation for denial is difficult on that side in particular, especially if we have to meet 15-feet setbacks from what is designated as a primary entry. That gives me a very small buildable area. So the, but if that were back to a normal setback of seven feet even, I could make that work fairly easily with very few modifications to the design. Architecturally speaking, the floor plan is not oversized. It's a fairly compact home. And the rooms are, while they're not overly generous, they're pretty efficient in terms of how they lay out. The other piece that Katie and Peter will mention, or get further into than I'm going to, but just to help frame that conversation, this is a project on the Bryant Avenue bikeway. And the project is owned by two full-time bike commuters who bike all year round and have that as their primary and only form of transportation. So the floor plan is designed to optimize and make that lifestyle possible, which is doubly appropriate because it's on the bike path. But it's also something we should, in my opinion, be encouraging from a sustainability perspective for all residences, just making that easier. And one of the things that makes that doable on this project is that side door goes into a bike room, or, well, it's a storage room, but it's sized appropriately to bring bikes in and out and leave them there to make bike commuting easy and a viable option. So if we had to shrink the floor plan, that bike room becomes less usable and makes it a little bit more difficult. So we're really hoping that we don't have to do that.
And then the three-foot overhangs, is that just to maximize solar panel? I mean, is it just a matter of the dimensions of a panel, or?
It's a matter of the dimensions of the panel and optimizing and getting as many on the roof as we can, but also there's another key component to the project that Katie and Peter will get into, where this is actually going to be a straw bale build, which is a type of construction that actually has a tremendous amount of carbon storage potential. And straw bale builds are extremely resilient buildings. There are examples of them all over the country that have been around for a long time. But one of the key features there is you do want to, you want to keep water from sitting on the building. So the oversized eaves do double duty, where they keep the walls drier and they give us more roof area for solar.
And then lastly, I was looking at your stoop, and I know it's been revised to be smaller, but still larger than 16 square feet. Is there a reason why you're not just continuing that permeable paver up to there and then making it a 16?
Nope. We can totally do that.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for me?
Other questions for the applicant? No, thank you very much.
Yes, thank you.
If you could state your name and address for the record.
Okay. Well, I'll try this. Hi. Commissioner Rockwell and other Commissioners, my name is Katie Jones, and I live at 2219 Bryant Avenue South, the location of the proposed project. And I'm here to talk about the origin and the rationale behind this project. I'd actually like to start, or to start, I'd like to touch on a great asset that we have in Minnesota, which is the first certified passive house in North America called the BO House. This is located in Bemidji, Minnesota, at the site of the German Language Emergence Summer Camp called Waldse. It's actually where Peter and I met. And this building taught me a lot about the feasibility of sustainable building and the value of a demonstration project, especially when they're interactive. As a 16-year-old, I'm actually in that picture, I got to plant some of the plants, some of the sedums, on that building. And that type of work has really stuck with me. Later, I became a contractor, actually, for the City of Minneapolis's Sustainability Office. And in that role, I calculated the 2015 greenhouse gas emissions for the city, and I coordinated the city's first clean energy partnership report. I saw firsthand the steep climb that we have in order to reach our Climate Action Plan goals. The majority of emissions from Minneapolis stem from the energy use in buildings. And so improving energy efficiency and electrifying buildings to use renewable energy is important and needs to accelerate. And so I personally really take that to heart. We've been doing that on our own triplex. We've electrified the heating. We have solar on the triplex, and so that benefits not only us, but the tenants inside. And we're trying to be a demonstration project from our triplex, and now trying to do that in this building as well. So sustainability is not the only problem. In Minneapolis, we have a housing crisis and are in desperate need of new units. Thinking about what is in our control and in our budget, along with the existing examples of our neighborhood, we sought to build an environmentally friendly carriage house, which would add a single unit of housing. And I want to just outline a couple of examples of those. So all of these examples are either within a block or two blocks of our house. So this is a carriage house that is being lived in at 2200 Aldrich Avenue South. And this building basically sits right on the corner of the lot lines there, within a couple of feet. This house is at 2311 Bryant Avenue South. There's a three-car garage that was historically a carriage house, also sits similarly very close to the lot line, and has a giant room up above, which could be made into a living unit, so that would, could constitute an ADU type of thing. And lastly, so this is the white house of the neighborhood. It's a really gorgeous house at 2447 Bryant. Sorry, the picture's a little dark, but they have an absolutely massive carriage house at the back, and is also actually overhanging the lot line in the Hennepin County records of their pictures. So moving back on to our project, we brought on an awesome all-female architect team, Precipitate Architecture, to design our house back in 2018. We were moving along to get quotes from contractors, but after hearing about sit panels and foam, I was not excited about the building. Foam is very fossil fuel intensive, and I didn't feel good about moving in that direction. So we took a pause so I could research a bunch of different alternatives. I checked out many books from the library. I had calls with natural builders from Colorado to Canada. I learned that straw is a waste product and can be used for building. This is actually the first straw bale building in the United States. It was built in Nebraska. Actually, straw bale building was first done in the United States because, one, Nebraska has very few trees, and the baling machine was recently invented in the 20s. And so they just stacked bales on top of one another and then covered that in plaster. And so this is a 1928 building that is still standing and is successfully, you know, still there today. I learned that there are dozens of successful straw bale buildings in towns throughout the United States. There are some in Petersburg, Canada, which has a similar climate to ours, and there are even ones in Minnesota. So here are some examples of some cold-climate straw bale builds. So there's one in North Branch, there's one in Maine, so I have example from one in Maine and one from Ontario. I also, so fun fact, straw bale buildings, they're great for the winter, but they're also very fire resistant. So there were actually four buildings in California that survived the wildfires because of their strong thermal resistance to temperature change. So those were the four buildings that were left standing from the fires and the other thing else. It was gone. So this was looking like a very promising wall assembly, and I wanted to see the process for myself. Last September, I went to a build workshop in Washington, where at this workshop, a team of 30 volunteers took her week to build homeowner Kathy's straw bale walls. I was convinced that, one, it is a viable wall assembly; two, it achieves my goals of energy efficiency, using a waste material, and is compostable at the end of its life; and, three, it can be a fun and valuable community building aspect of construction. So we would like to build a modest home this summer at approximately 1,400 square feet. It is much smaller than the US average of 2,400 square feet. And the two-bedroom, one-and-a-half-bath will accommodate a future family of two children. I would like to also draw attention to the paragraph in the letter provided by our straw bale expert that should be in your packet, Andrew Morrison. He says, "The challenge of straw bale walls is their thickness, and thus the application for variance. Although the walls provide the attributes, many good attributes, as well as the superior soundproofing and other qualities, they are thick, on average 21 inches from face to face. This extra thickness is too much to add to an interior floor space as it detracts from functionality. It is common to push the wall surfaces out, thus maintaining the interior square footage of the home design. The request for a side yard setback variance is made in order to preserve the quality of straw bale wall features while maintaining an adequate interior floor plan. I would suggest that since the city is interested in green construction techniques, it may need to consider a few variance requests to accommodate such builds. Being that existing structures in the neighborhood are already located within the setback boundaries, issuing a variance in exchange for high-efficiency wall construction seems reasonable." So I believe we have a practical need for a side yard setback. So we've had to apply for a cluster development because of our triplex. We cannot apply for an ADU. An ADU would only have setbacks of three feet, and even a single-family home has setbacks of five feet. So I think this property, you know, fits more of the spirit of one of those, one of those structures, and it would be reasonable to have a variance. One other thing I wanted to touch on that I'm really excited about is that with the straw bale raising component, we're going to have a barn raising. And I'm really big on community building. I've been part of my neighbors' association for years. And so like the workshop I attended, we'll invite community members to be a part of this demonstration project. Like with the BO House, I want others to feel, see, and interact with the unique sustainability example and be inspired. So in conclusion, we are nothing if not intentional. We are no way perfect, but we do our best to take a community building, a women-in-my-own local business supporting and sustainability lens to much of what we do. We feel this project is an excellent demonstration of those values, which align very closely to the Minneapolis 2040 Plan, and we ask for your support on this project and the requested variances. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions for the applicant? Yes, Commissioner Lupkepeer.
Hi. Sorry, I was looking through your drawings, and I just had some questions, and I know they're not, given that the bulk of your argument is that practical difficulties exist in meeting the sustainability goals of the city. So my question, though, is in regard to more passive heating and cooling in terms of window openings. I can't tell whether it's just because we're looking at a small, teeny-tiny set, or it looks like most, not most, it looks like a lot of the windows aren't operable, so are they operable to allow for cross-ventilation, or are they not? Or is it a mix? Or what's the, maybe your architect's actually the best person, sorry, I should have asked this before.
Yeah, it'll be a mix.
We run an energy model to optimize the building shape. In this case, that was not very difficult because we knew we were going with a box. But as well as window openings, size of windows, and where operable windows go. So there will be cross-ventilation, adequate cross-ventilation, and more than that throughout the entire building. In order, in terms of cost containment, where we don't need operable and where the owner doesn't want them, we won't put them. So that's why some of them are and some of them aren't. What you see, there will be potentially revisions to that, but that's just the first pass at where they need to go for, to achieve our energy and cross-ventilation goals.
And then I, since you're both up here, though, when you talked about ADUs, so I'm looking at this through, you know, kind of the dual ends. You're kind of saying, well, hey, if this was an ADU, you know, these are the things we'd have to follow. But I'm also wondering, if this were an ADU, we'd have to have more windows on the east side of the house, especially on the first floor. So can you talk about that just a little bit in terms of, you know? So can you talk about that just a little bit in terms of, you know, it's kind of walking a fine line if it's... We wouldn't allow this if it were an ADU, just because it's missing windows, so.
The reason that the plan doesn't show windows, a lot of windows, on the east side right now is because that overlooks an asphalt parking lot. If it were required that we put them there, we certainly could. Again, going back to cost containment, we don't put windows where we don't need them. It's the most expensive part of the wall. So if that were, if you were going to, for example, if you said, "We will give you the opportunity to use ADU three-foot setbacks on this property like you would have been able to do if your building was a duplex instead of a triplex," we would say, "Great, we will put a window in for you." You know, as architects, we want, appreciate, and love natural light. We will obviously default to doing what complies with the ordinance and keeps the occupant happy and healthy and doesn't, hopefully, you know, give them a nasty, dirty view. There will be a fence there. So if there's a window there, we can manage the site a little, you know, differently and have a garden, so.
Any other questions for the applicant? I've got one quick question. You mentioned the solar exposure as one reason for the sighting. Can you speak a little bit more about that? Sure.
Yeah, maybe just get him up here.
All right, then, I'll hold that question. Please state your name and address for the record.
Yeah, my name's Peter Schmidt, I live at 2219. If you believe it or not, we live in the attic. So I wanted to touch briefly on three points. Katie tells a great narrative, and I don't want to get too long-winded on this part. So I had three pieces that I wanted to address, one of which is the solar component. That's kind of my wheelhouse. I work as a community solar developer here in Minneapolis. So the three pieces I wanted to quickly touch on is finance, the solar pieces, and the setbacks. On the finance side, there's certainly been technical difficulties in terms of designing this space, both in terms of finding the straw bale component, making it fit on the lot in a way that conforms as close as we can to the code, but also, it turns out, paying for a project that's quite different is challenging. A lot of the big banks wouldn't touch us because it's something they've never heard of before. A lot of the small banks wouldn't touch us because it's something they hadn't heard of before. So we managed to go through quite a process of finding mid-tier banks that would work with us on this project, regional banks. And I think that's actually quite useful for the City of Minneapolis, to be able to show that model, especially as the building stock's going to be changing over the next 30, 40 years as we try to meet those climate goals. So I do think this is a good project for that, to be able to say, "Hey, there's an example of this in the city. We know how to finance this, we know it's reliable, we know what it's going for." So that's one aspect of this project that's quite interesting. On the solar side of things, as Katie, I think, made a great point on, this is a very intentional project in a lot of ways. One of the other intentional components on the solar side is that not only are these going to be optimized for solar gain, this is also going to be using panels that are manufactured in the Iron Range. Helene Manufacturing, it's a Canadian company that has an Iron Range location. It's actually using bi-facial modules, which is a new technology, which is, it has a clear back sheet, which allows you to produce energy from both sides of the module. So one of the cool components that we didn't really get to talk about in the plan sets is we're using almost a skylight component over the balcony so you can see through to be able to view the solar panel from below. Part of the reason for this is we've participated in the solar tour in the past, and we want to continue to do that in the future to show off not only the solar panel components, the heat pump components, the sustainable build components. But again, we're taking a very intentional approach in not only choosing a technology that's good, but also a technology that's local here to us in Minnesota. So to your point about how this was optimized, the Helene panels, the 380-watt modules that we're using are a little bit longer and skinnier than a traditional 300 or 330-watt module. So right now, we're repurposing, there are 10 modules that are on our garage that we're deconstructing through Better Futures Minnesota, very cool group. They're going to be recycling and repurposing those products. So those 10 modules will be stored in our basement during construction, and then those 10, in additional to 20 to 22 other Helene modules, will be put back on the roof. So between the triplex and this new structure, we're going to be having somewhere around a 20-kilowatt array, which is quite substantial, especially on a lot this size. So those are kind of the financing and the solar pieces. One last piece I wanted to put in, in the packets, I know you've probably seen a lot of letters coming in on the setback side of things. One piece, both our northern and southern direct neighbors actually requested that our setbacks be even reduced on the east side. Again, it's abutting a parking lot. And we've actually worked with Excel Energy on this as well. They've agreed to actually bury our electric lines on-site, which would allow us, from their perspective, to go within a foot. I know that's certainly not going to happen with this body, but just saying. There's a lot of different actors kind of playing into what we're requesting on the setback side of things. For our tenants, we're trying to create the biggest possible interior yard. We're removing a parking pad that's there right now to create a more usable space, which is also allowing us to put a pollinator garden in the front yard of our triplex. So by moving the property potentially even further to the east, you could create a bigger interior yard, a shared tenant amenity, which would fall under some of the cluster development goals, as well as just making things nicer for the tenants as opposed to having a five-foot backyard that's in between a parking lot and a building. You have more of an interior yard, which is usable for everyone. I know there is a staff recommendation on the table, but I do believe it is within this body's control to actually recommend a change to that setback, if you wanted to even make it smaller. So, again, a lot of intentional components about this project. We have also a good coalition of other neighbors here to support this project, and I'd be happy to talk about any of those components or anything else in the project. Thank you.
Commissioners, are there any questions for the applicant? I've said that now for three people. All right, thank you very much. Anybody else wishing to testify, please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Mariah Weitz and Camp. I live at 2626 Emerson Avenue South. I'm here in support of the variances required for the proposed dwelling. I think I just echo a lot of the sustainability sentiments that have been shared already. So I hope this won't be too repetitive. I've lived in the Lowry Hill Northeast neighborhood for the last four years. I'm friends with Katie and Peter, and I've worked with Katie a lot on the Environmental Committee. And one of the best things about Lena is our focus on sustainable initiatives. The neighborhood even offers a green loan for the purpose of energy efficiency and renewable energy upgrades. The proposed unit is really exciting because it's a demonstration of how highly efficient buildings can be designed and constructed with minimal waste. And I think it's really important that we all start to take responsibility for the waste that we produce and where it's going. Each component of this building will be carefully selected with its final destination in mind, beyond the life of the structure itself. At the end of its life, a lot of it will be compostable rather than sent to a landfill. And the construction of this building challenges people to consider the lifetime impact of all that we're investing in. It will spark new ideas and promote eco-friendly lifestyles that help target climate change and reduce massive amounts of waste that we produce. Especially exciting is the way that Katie wants to incorporate the neighborhood involvement, and I think that will help spark some of those things, to be able to see something like this done. The project is requesting a couple of variances, including one for a reduction in side yard setbacks. The current five-foot requirement for single-family homes is already uncommon within our neighborhood. The garage at my own residence is only three feet from our neighbor's garage. I didn't build it. Minneapolis is undertaking many zero-waste efforts with the goal of not just environmental stewardship, but also advancing economic processes and increasing environmental justice. The city can further promote these goals and support the innovation of our Minneapolis residents by granting the side yard setback variance that will allow for the energy-efficient design of this project. I'm excited to see the inspiration that this could bring to our community. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Next person who wishes to testify, if any, please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
Hi, Commissioner Rockwell and other commissioners, my name is Timothy Zuko. I live at 23... Pardon me? Oh, okay. I'm sorry.
Just name and address for the record, for privacy purposes.
Sure. Okay. 2316 Bryant Avenue South. I'm direct across-the-street neighbor of Katie and Peter, and I've lived there for 13 years. And I was there when they moved in. And initially, I was immediately impressed by these two community superstars who were doing all kinds of great things in the neighborhood, hosting neighborhood night outs. And they were on the WEDGE Neighborhood Board. And immediately, I saw that they were advocates for solar power and energy in the neighborhood, bringing tables out in front of the WEDGE store and demonstrating to other neighbors in the area how this could be really beneficial. And I'm just super excited that this is going to be new technology, the bale build, straw bale build. And I think it could be a great, if you get some publicity, it could be a great city-wide effort eventually. And I really look forward to the education process in our local neighborhood community as we have the community involvement in the build. So just as a across-the-street neighbor, I wanted to say I really support this and all their efforts. I think they might have the smallest carbon footprint of anyone I've ever met. Might just be a thumb, I don't know. Thanks for your time.
Thank you so much. Does anybody else wish to testify? Last call, anybody else? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Commissioners, we have a number of applications before us. Anybody like to start us off with a question or a motion or discussion? Yes, Commissioner Meyer.
I think this is a great project, exactly the type of thing that we want to see, very much in the spirit of the 2040 Plan. With all of the different thoughtful environmental initiatives that they've included in it, I think that, you know, this is the type of thing that we want to see become a model for the city. And I believe that, in particular, the energy-efficiency techniques that they need for their walls justify the setback reductions. So I guess I'll start by making motions for the staff-recommended motion. So I would move to approve the conditional use permit to allow for cluster development with the two conditions listed, and the variance to reduce the minimum lot area.
We have a motion to approve items A and B, the conditional use permit, and the variance to reduce the minimum lot area, consistent with staff recommendation. Do we have a second? We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Caprini?
Yes. Oh, I'm sorry. Yes.
Oh, you're good. I tuned it on for you. Loopke here?
Aye.
Meyer?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Schrader?
Aye.
Dunick?
Aye.
Ismiley?
Aye.
Marwa?
Aye.
Sweetsie?
Aye.
Eight-zero.
Motion carries. Commissioner Meyer.
To decrease the north interior side yard setback, the variance to decrease the south interior side yard setback, and the variance to decrease the rear yard setback, you know, as described in items C, D, and E.
Just a reminder that with any motion contrary to staff recommendation, we do need to make findings. So findings two and three were met. That leaves us with finding number one, whether or not practical difficulties exist due to circumstances unique to this property.
So then I would say the finding is we want it to accommodate the wider walls for the passive house design. Is that sufficient?
Do we have, I can help articulate these in a moment. Do we have a second on motion to approve items C, D, and E? We have a motion and a second. So if I can just try to articulate it a little bit more, you know... Commissioner Loopke here.
Sorry, I would like to articulate some of the findings. So I have to say, initially, when I was reading through the packet, I kind of was thinking that staff had made a really reasonable decision in a lot of these. I think, in no particular order, I do want to say that I think the entrance to the south, it doesn't... I would actually, for once, disagree with staff on this. I think it is not a principal entrance. I would define it more of a secondary entrance. It's, if I were to design, let's say this is a rental structure, I would assume this would maybe be for maintenance equipment or whatever. So a landowner could actually store things on-site to a lawnmower or whatever, and wouldn't be the front entrance to anything. So I guess I would say that, in my mind, actually leads to maybe some of this, and variance D not quite being as applicable. I think your willingness to reduce the stoop size to comply with the code says something. But I think the practical difficulties, as Commissioner Meyer was saying, is what I would touch on as well. Not because we can just swap variances in favor of sustainability initiatives, but because if you were to comply, if you were to not do these extra steps that are in fact contributing to the extra thickness of the walls, you could in fact comply. And when I looked at your floor plan, well, the second floor has, you know, some extra square footage. You could think about shrinking it. In reality, it's being driven by the lower floor plan with the hallway, the bathroom. The two bedrooms are reasonably sized. And because that almost necessitates the width of the structure, that's what's leading to many of these variances, at least in my opinion. So I would say that that extra thickness, the fact that if you went with an inferior thing, you might not be here in front of us, to me, that's a practical difficulty because we're asking through our comp plan for you to do more. And because through doing that, you are in fact infringing on the setbacks. I think the three feet for the solar panels, I was kind of going, "Well..." But you're right, with the straw bales, you don't want that molding out on you and then having your house collapse. So I am kind of bummed that there are not more windows, however, so maybe consider something. But I can't mandate that as a result of this. So that's why I will be supporting the motion as it stands for the three. And I also agree that the rear yard setback, I do think that tends to do wasted space. And I understand for fire purposes why we don't want things right near the lot line. But at the same time, there is something you said about allowing usable space and maybe even concentrating more areas for infiltration on the site. So that's why I will be supporting it.
Commissioners, Commissioner Sweetsie.
I won't be able to support the motion. And it's not because I don't think that this is a great project and everything that you've said about it. Sometimes the law is the last thing to catch up with good ideas and things that are happening. And I think that what you have here is an excellent example of a reason that perhaps some of these building ordinances or the ADU ordinance, or I'm not sure exactly what it is, should change to be able to accommodate something like this. But that's not the situation that we're in today. And Commissioner Loopke here, just in making her findings, you know, said that this isn't just swapping variances for sustainability goals. I couldn't disagree more strongly with that. I think that's exactly what this is. What is necessary for a variance is to make a finding that a practical difficulty exists because of circumstances unique to the property, which in this case means there has to be something about 2219 Bryant Avenue South that prohibits you from being able to comply with the setback things. And you have a good reason for not being able to comply with them because you want to put up this great structure, and it makes sense to me, and I think it's a great idea, and I like everything I heard. But it's not unique to 2219 Bryant Avenue South. That's not the reason that you can't do it. And, you know, the rules of the game really are still that you can't do everything you want with the property that you have, even if it's for a good reason or a good thing or promotes another goal of the comp plan. Promoting a goal of the comp plan is not the same as having a legal-practical difficulty. And even in the discussion, as I was listening, you know, what I heard was that there's a practical need for a variance. That's not the standard that we have, and that's not what's required by the ordinances of the City of Minneapolis. So I guess I would, you know, recommend strongly to our council member on the commission that perhaps, you know, something like this be looked at for, you know, ways around it or things are a way forward, you know. I think it's an excellent example of something that people can do and should do, but I don't think you have the basis for the findings in this case. So I'll be voting against it, sorry.
Commissioner Schrader.
Thank you. I think that's an excellent point. I will be supporting this. It is something the city is struggling with. Last year, at the end of the year, we passed a sustainable building policy, working on the details of that right now. And I think when we talk about the law not being there yet, I think that that's something that's evolving extremely quickly. I mean, you're talking about, when you're building a co-built house, how many years are we going to get something out of that? You know, as a city, we need to think about what 30 years down the line, 40 years down the line's going to look like and what it's going to cost all of us to replace that. So I really appreciate the applicant's thinking of building a house that is going to be to meet all future standards. We do definitely have to have our laws catch up, but I see the practical difficulty in this is just that you're being held to a standard of a cluster development and not an ADU, where you are thinking about all this extra stuff. And for all, when all that's taken together, I think it clearly meets the requirements.
Commissioners, is there any other discussion? Kimberly.
Once again, I would encourage, as part of this motion, for the commission to come up with findings that are specific to the property as the ordinance requires.
Question for Steph. So we've heard a couple times, if this were a duplex, would the applicant be able to build this?
No. This particular structure as proposed would exceed the maximum height allowed for an accessory dwelling unit. It would also exceed the maximum FAR. for an accessory dwelling unit. It would also exceed the maximum FAR for an accessory dwelling unit. The point about the principal entrance, I'd have to look to Kimberly to help me out on reminding me if the side entrance is allowed. It's just not coming to me right now.
For an accessory dwelling unit, the side entrance would be allowed. But the zoning administrator has a very longstanding interpretation about what constitutes a principal entrance and the way this structure is designed. The side entrance would be a principal entrance under that interpretation.
And, and the adjustments to the, are there applications available for adjustments to the height and FAR for an ADU?
There are, through the gross layer, yes, there's a variance option for the height. That was recently amended. But I, I don't believe you could build a structure that exceeds 20 feet unless the principal structure was quite a bit taller.
Commissioners.
I'm not sure you have an answer to that, but there's an ordinance change going through that would be approved on Friday. If things would go well, how would, do you know how the height would affect this?
I believe that it's 20 feet is what's proposed in the, in the text amendment.
It's okay.
And as, this structure is, I believe, 33 feet to the, to the peak. And, I believe it's 25. Just bear with me a moment. There we are. It's 25 feet to the midpoint. So this would, this would exceed both floor area and height. So it is not consistent with our ADU regulations for those two, those two zoning regulations. Thank you.
Yes, African May, Stephane.
I'd like to bring up that the triplex is nearing 40 feet in height. So the existing property that's going to remain is, is quite tall. So the ADU ordinance of, or limit of 20 feet, or there's, whichever one is greater. So it still doesn't comply, but the, I just wanted to point out that the principal structure is quite a bit taller than a typical house.
Thank you. Commissioners, any further discussion? Yes, Commissioner Ismiley.
Okay. As I'm actually reading through this and listening to everyone, I will admit that it's, this is quite difficult to try to figure out what makes the most sense. The question that I had, which may, I may have should, I may have should, I probably should have asked the applicant earlier, was that part of the difficulty that is being raised is due to the thickness of the walls. And, and I definitely understand that, but even if it was a regular wall, it will still be exceeding the setbacks required. And so I guess my understanding is limited in the sense that I don't see why that would be the case. So I would understand it if, if with a, a regular type of wall, you would be meeting the variance, but with this type, now you're not, then I would say, yes, it's a practical difficulty. But even with a regular type of wall, it's still not meeting the code. So that's where I have a bit of a problem with trying to understand why this would be an actual practical difficulty.
Can you just address that quickly?
So shrinking the walls back to code minimum construction and a minor adjustment of the, the location of the home on the site would allow us to comply, not with the southern setback of 15 feet, but with the, the other, the north and the east setbacks. So there's a way that we can design around that fairly easily without reducing interior livable square, floor area. I just wanted to, do you have other questions about that? I want to make sure that's clear.
Yes. Commissioners.
I guess without compromising the straw bale structure, you're saying that it's possible to change the design to the point?
We would have to compromise the straw bale structure.
Okay. Well, that, that was my point, that I would understand that for wanting to meet the sustainability goals and wanting to be in compliance with Minneapolis 2040, that exceeding the variance by the amount of the thickness of the wall, I think, would be acceptable in my mind. But for the extra, I don't understand. That, that was all I was saying. But thank you for the explanation.
Commissioners, are there any other questions or discussion? Yes, Commissioner Meyer.
I just wanted to point out, looking at the, kind of the floor plan maps, that the existing garage does go into that setback currently, and that was allowed and exists. Okay. So the new plan would actually be moving it to allow for a larger setback. Okay. Thank you.
Kimberly.
Oh, I was just going to clarify. There are reduced setbacks allowed for accessory structures in the rear 40 feet of a lot. That would not apply in this situation. So the current garage in its configuration is permitted by code.
Any further discussion or questions? All right. So to the best of my ability, I will articulate the argument there is for the findings that's before the commission, and then take a vote on this motion. So there is a, on the practical difficulties of the setbacks, a feeling that the entrance to the south should not be considered a principal entrance, and that the 2040 Plan has a series of goals around sustainability. And just to add some color to that, those, I think the most applicable there are Policy 68 and 67, which call for decreased demand for energy, increased locally-produced energy, and then indicates a wish to avoid the need for retrofits, sustainable building materials and so forth. There is therefore a comprehensive plan support for sustainable building practices, which are in conflict with our current zoning code. And we are in a period of time where our comprehensive plan guidance is not aligned with our zoning code. And we are struggling with this in every, every week and every month on how to thread this needle. So this is, I think, represents the findings that have been made. With that, clerk, please call the roll.
Caprini?
Aye.
Dunick?
Aye.
Ismiley?
Aye.
Lupke Pier?
Aye.
Marwa?
Aye.
Meyer?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Schrader?
Aye.
Sweetsie?
No.
Eight to one.
That motion carries approving variances for items C, D, and E. Commissioner Lupke Pier.
I'd like to return variance F to increase the maximum lot coverage.
We have a motion to return item F, maximum lot coverage. Do we have a second? We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Caprini?
Aye.
Dunick?
Aye.
Ismiley?
Aye.
Lupke Pier?
Aye.
Marwa?
Aye.
Meyer?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Schrader?
Aye.
Sweetsie?
Aye.
Nine-zero.
That motion carries, and that concludes our business with item number six and with our discussion agenda. Kimberly, are there any staff updates?
No updates this week.
Very good. Thank you very much. Meeting is adjourned.